I'd like to call to order the February 11th, 2019, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Linda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer? Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowen?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner?
Here.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Here.
Mr. Roslevich?
Be it resolved, pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 104-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss HIV and student discipline matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 104-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I please get a motion to recess to a closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Convene to public session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
So Scott, I believe that we had talked about moving the students' spotlight up a spot, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so with everybody's permission, we didn't want to make our student wait through the interviews, so we are gonna jiggle the agenda a little bit and we are going to move... So I guess that's your whole report, right? So we'll just move the superintendent's report up to item number seven.
Correct. I'm gonna step up to the podium and introduce Julian, and then I'm gonna ask that you join me and family for a picture. So, one second. Julian?
Yeah.
Come on over. Why don't you sit over there? I'm gonna be speaking to you on behalf of Mr. Lassiter, who I had sent home sick tonight. He wasn't doing well, so I gave him an extra couple of hours to sleep in tomorrow morning, if you catch my drift. But he did provide with me, to me, all the information that he was gonna share about Julian. Julian McManus Smith is one of our high school students who was nominated by our high school science teacher, Ms. Keisha Steffen, who speaks very glowingly of all the work that Julian's been doing. So I'm just gonna read a few comments, and then I have a few of my own words I'd like to share. First of all, Ms. Steffen points out that she's known Julian since he's been a freshman. Now that she sees him as a senior, at least once a month when he comes to biology class because he's part of the Teen Pep Program. Teen Pep is a student-run leadership group of 15 students who have been pushing into our science classes to teach family and sex education, family life and sex education to our younger students, our freshmen. So Julian stepped up and he's become a leader as part of that group. So Ms. Steffen is pointing out that she gets to see him during those times when they push into her class. But she called out Julian about a particular thing that happened during the blood drive back in November. It was on a Thursday that Julian came in during lunch and said he was there, and he came on his own, obviously. He was there to help out since he knew the team that was trying to promote and implement the blood drive was short-staffed. His presence, and this is Ms. Steffen's word, was a blessing. He knew exactly what to do as he took care of the refreshment area, and he was also a buddy to his peers who just gave blood. So I happen to be popping in and out of the blood drive myself, and I do recall seeing Julian kind of moving around, working in the room and making sure that other people were comfortable. I mean, it's not an easy thing to give blood. Needles scare some people, but Julian was there to prop them up and give them the support that they needed. She wanted to make sure that Julian was called out on a Monday night, tonight, in front of the Board of Education, livestreamed to the community for his remarkable work. Mr. Lassiter chimed in a little bit, too, so had he been here, he would share these words. Julian has stood out for him from many other students in how he's grown and developed since he's known him in sixth grade. Mr. Lassiter was the vice principal, the principal of the middle school, the high school, he was also a teacher, so he's seen students come and go, so for him to call out Julian, I think is extra special. A few things that Mr. Lassiter also wants to share are the fact that Julian has maintained an extremely positive outlook. It's not easy to wake up in the morning and choose your attitude and choose to be positive, but Julian brings an air of positive vibe to everyone he interacts with. And overall, he's just been so successful and such a strong part of the Teen Pep Program. So it is my honor to be here in Mr. Lassiter's stead to present Julian with a certificate and honor him as our Student of the Month. So let's give a hand to Julian. And I want to invite the board president and the family up so we can get some pictures because we're gonna put a little splash on the website.
All right. Well, that's like the best kind of report. All right, wonderful. So we will move on to the candidate interviews for the vacancy that we have on the board right now. So we've kind of gone over the process a couple of times, we'll go over it one last time. Linda has her trusty, empty tissue box over here that has both of the candidates' names. And are you gonna be doing the drawing? Or are the students gonna be doing the drawing? All right, students get lots of responsibilities this evening, so they will draw out a name. That person will go first. So the person who gets drawn to go first will be called up to the microphone first. The other person is going to be escorted to a lovely, another place that's not here so that the first candidate can give a little introduction about themselves, and then we just have one question that we're gonna ask of each candidate, same question of each candidate. And then when that first candidate is finished, you guys will swap places and we'll interview the second candidate, and then the board will recess into closed for hopefully what will just be a short period of time to discuss the candidates, and then we will come back into open session. A board member or two will nominate a candidate, and then the board will vote on any nominations. So that is how the process will work. So I think the students are all geared up for their roles. They will, one will get to draw the name, and then one will get to escort the other candidate to the...
They can do it in tandem.
All right, however they want to do it. Yeah, I think we're ready.
Second one will be John Whitten. Please follow me to the main office.
Been a long time since you've been called to the principal's office, huh? Boy, this goes a lot faster when there's only two candidates, when there's been like five candidates in the past, so it's like, okay, now you go to this room, and you go to that room, you go to that room, okay. This goes a lot faster. Hi, good evening, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Good. Very good, thank you. Thanks so much for being here tonight. So you can just take as much time as you want to make a statement, and then we just will have one question for you.
Okay, it's supposed to be three, four minutes, is that right?
Take as much time as you want.
Okay. So I wrote a few remarks, and I printed them out, and then I changed slightly, so I'm just gonna read off my laptop. So dear members of the board, my name is Chris Woodward. I've lived in Highland Park since 1998. My daughters Sophie and Julia have gone through Irving-Bardell, the middle school, and almost finished the high school in the Highland Park system. Sophie has just graduated and left for Boston, of course, we miss her terribly. Julia's a junior at the high school and enjoying a lot of our wonderfully diverse student body. Unfortunately, we live at a time when public education is under attack. Standardized tests have been designed to make public schools appear as failing so the government can divert taxpayer funds away from the public system. The good news is that our public schools are not failing. My daughters have had fantastic experiences in the Highland Park system. They were educated by many amazing teachers and staff. Sophie reports that her preparation for college was just as rigorous as those of classmates who have gone to expensive private schools. Over the years, my daughters have participated in many extracurriculars in Highland Park such as soccer, track, orchestra, Model UN, and environmental club. Through them, I know the debates about the outside coach position that came up at the last board meeting, which, as I understand, is governed by union contract, the lack of participation of underrepresented groups in our AP classes, and changing graduation requirements, which last time I checked was governed by court order. I also know the Highland Park system through my volunteer activities. These include two years on the Principal's Advisory Committee for the middle school. I've been on the Advisory Hiring Committee for several positions, and I was also sort of an assistant-assistant girls' soccer coach at the middle school, helping out Ms. Ferango and Coach McGraw. The Board of Education helps attract excellent faculty and staff to the district. One of the challenges the board faces is to create a professional environment for career development in the context of very severe political, financial, and legal restrictions set by the state. Some of my professional experience that might be relevant, I don't want to oversell this, but it's a little bit, also very restrictive environment. At Rutgers, faculty, I've taught courses for pre-service and in-service K-12 teachers, which is not the same thing as having experience as a K-12 teacher, but I'm aware of some of the issues that arise in the system. I'm aware with some of the problems with national and state curriculum standards. As an administrator, I've dealt with budget, curriculum, public relations, and union contract issues as acting chair of a unit. My unit has around 150 faculty and maybe 20 staff, and it has an enrollment of 24,000, so it's a big unit. I always try and emphasize proactive communication with all parts of the community. It's especially important when it's a big community, and I do my best to try and develop consensus on difficult issues. If selected as a rookie board member, I would depend on the experience that you, the current board members, have accumulated. You have my admiration and appreciation for volunteering so much of your time to benefit our children. Thanks very much for your service.
You're welcome, and thank you for your interest. We very much appreciate that. So I'm gonna do the same thing, I'm gonna read off my screen, just so I make sure I ask exactly the same question of both of you. So don't be offended that I look over this way. Each year, the board sets goals to guide our work. Since 2016, those goals have been based on the district's strategic plan, called the Pathway to Excellence, that was created with staff, students, parents, and members of the Highland Park community at large. The board's three goals, in the most general terms, are meant to promote equity in our schools. How do you define equity, and what do you think an equitable school district would look like?
Equity for me means that all of the students have the same opportunities, and each student is treated as an individual. We have a very diverse student body, and I think each student deserves resources. There've been a lot of...how much time are we expecting for this question?
Again, as much time as you want.
Okay. You know, I mean, there's so many different kinds of equity. You know, over the years, you know, we've had issues with socioeconomic equity, racial equity, equity in terms of people come with different kinds of abilities to the school system, and I know that's mentioned in the goals of the district. The district does have a really great reputation, I think, for accommodating students with different abilities, and I think that's something the district can be really proud of. So I think the original question was, what does equity mean to me, and how would I...what was the second part of the question?
And what would an equitable school district look like?
What would an equitable school district look like? You know, I think, you know, one of the issues that I've been hearing about from my daughters is the, you know, the participation in things like the AP classes, and, you know, we need to see a representation in those classes that more reflects the community. I don't think there are any easy answers about how to achieve that. It's a very tough issue, but that's what I would like to see. I know there have been some, maybe, debate about maybe cutting back on AP classes. I don't have a particular attachment to AP classes, per se, versus just sort of other classes about a particular topic. As far as I'm concerned, I didn't encourage my daughters to take the AP exams, they ended up taking them anyway. But I do think we want to have a very diverse group of courses for the students, and we want to allow them and encourage them to take courses as they feel able to and respond to the challenges. I think I'll stop there. I don't really have anything else to add.
Wonderful, okay, wonderful, thank you very much. So one of you guys wanna help these gentlemen make a swap? Thank you so much. And now's when we need our Jeopardy music.
Hello.
Hi. So you'll get as much time as you want to make a statement, say whatever you'd like, and then I'll have one question for you, the same question that I had for the gentleman before you, and you'll get as much time as you want to answer that, and...
Okay.
Okay.
I'm John Whiten, and I'm interested in serving on the Board of Education because I believe that high-quality public schools are one of the strongest building blocks that we can have for young kids to have social and economic success in the future. If chosen to serve, I would work my hardest to make sure that the district is doing all it can to make that building block as large as possible for all kids in the district, no matter, you know, how much money their families have in their bank account, or the color of their skin, what languages are spoken in the home, or other differences. A little bit about my background, I've lived in Highland Park since 2011, and my son is currently a kindergartner at Irving. Professionally, I've worked in state policy for close to a decade, and for a decade before that, I worked as a writer and editor. I believe that both of these different buckets of my life experience would make me a good Board of Education member. On the personal side, my son Michael, also known to many as Mikey, will be in the public schools for a long time, so I'm personally committed to making sure he's receiving the quality education that was a big part of what drew my family here from Jersey City eight years ago. But I'm equally committed to making sure that all of his peers receive the same quality education. As a white, upper-middle-class man who went to public school in a pretty exclusive, nearly all-white community outside of Chicago, the diversity of Highland Park, and in particular its public schools, was a big draw in what convinced me that I could live here, having not really wanted to live in a suburb anywhere. But I know that diversity is sort of a surface-level representation, it's an accounting of what, you know, how many people are in different buckets, and it's not the same as making sure that all people in all of those buckets have a real shot to thrive, or what we might refer to as equity, right? So that's where I think we, as a town, and as a district, a state, a nation, have a lot of work to do, and I'd be honored to play a tiny role in that by serving on the Board of Ed to help both, you know, Mikey, but he'll be fine, mostly, you know, to make sure that he and his peers are on the equal footing moving forward from the very beginning. The other piece of my personal story that's sort of relevant is that Mikey has a chronic medical condition. He was diagnosed in 2015 with type 1 diabetes, requires 24/7 care and monitoring, including in the public schools. And I think that this gives me a unique perspective through which I view the public schools as an institution. I think it has also given me greater empathy and understanding for the challenges that parents whose children have a variety of different challenges face, and it gives me more motivation that if, you know, chosen to serve, to use my position on the Board of Ed to continue the progress that this board and other boards have made in setting truly inclusive district-wide policies. On the professional side, I have deep communications experience and a thorough understanding of how state policymaking, and particularly in New Jersey, can help or hinder a school district's success in allowing all children to have a shot to thrive. I worked in Trenton for seven years before I left that position for the national organization I currently work for. While doing so, I developed an intimate knowledge of the Trenton policymaking process, as well as strong connections to state legislators, administration officials, and statewide education stakeholders that I retain to this day and that I think would be helpful as a member of the Board of Education. My professional experience was mostly in state tax and budget policy, so the decisions about how the state raises and spends money, which, you know, is really a critical linchpin of all things education in the state of New Jersey, and sets up districts to succeed or fail their kids. On the more technical side of my professional life, I have a lot of experience running consensus-based coalitions and managing staff, managing organizational budgets and things of that nature. I think all of those could, seem like they could come in handy as a member of the Board of Ed. And I just want to close by thanking you all for this opportunity, for the chance to do this, and the chance to be here tonight. I'm happy to answer the one question that is gonna be posed, so...
All right, well, I'm gonna ask my computer to wake up so I can ask you that one question. And again, I'm gonna read right off of my computer screen, so please don't be offended that I turned to my computer, I want to make sure I ask you both exactly the same question the same way. Each year, the board sets goals to guide our work. Since 2016, those goals have been based on the district's strategic plan, called the Pathway to Excellence. That was created with staff, students, parents, and members of the Highland Park community at large. The board's three goals, in the most general terms, are meant to promote equity in our schools. How do you define equity, and what do you think an equitable school district would look like?
So I sort of got to some of that, I think, in my statement, but to me, equity is, you know, making sure that no matter the background of the student, that they are given, not an artificially equal chance to succeed, but actually a true equality of opportunity to succeed at school. I don't know, you know, in the education space and through district policy, what the most effective ways to do that are, but it's a core issue that I'm interested in, I'd be eager to dig in and learn more.
Okay. All right, John, thank you very much. So I guess what we will do now is, students, you can go back and get our other candidate and bring him back out here. I will make a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we will go to closed session, and then we will come back out, so we will see you all shortly. Okay, can I get a motion to reconvene to public session? Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, all right, thank you all. I don't think we were going too terribly long. So I want to thank both of you, obviously, for coming tonight, for your interest in joining the board. This is remarkably impossible. I don't... You both seem like remarkably reasonable and clearly, like, uber ridiculously qualified, and, you know, our community would be remarkably well-served by either of you. I think our best-case scenario would be if we could just take both of you, quite frankly, but I don't think we're allowed to have... I think board members are volunteering to leave their seats, so this is remarkably difficult. You've both done a tremendous amount for our community and in your respective professions, and we...I'm taking it as a personal compliment to the board that you're both here and wanting to serve with us, so thank you very much for being here. But unfortunately, we can only appoint one new board member, so at this point, I'll ask if there are any nominations for the vacant position.
I'd like to nominate John Whiten.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Gowen?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Dinacola?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
Okay, so, Mr. Whiten, congratulations. And Mr. Woodward, thank you so much for coming out. John, you get to come right up here and take the seat to the right of Ms. Hofela over here.
Stay here till 11:30.
So we're going to swear in, right?
Yes.
So the next thing we're going to do is, we're going to swear in Mr. Whiten. So I believe the mic is on.
Yes.
Okay.
I said that before knowing, but...
So if you could repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
And to the governments established in the United States and this state...
Under authority of the people...
Under authority of the people...
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications...
And I do affirm that I possess the qualifications...
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education...
Prescribed by law for the office of a member of a Board of Education...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly...
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability...
Perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability...
I do affirm that I am not disqualified as a voter...
I do affirm that I'm not disqualified as a voter...
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1...
Pursuant to RS 19:4-1...
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense...
And I am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime of offense...
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1...
Listed in NJSA 18A:12-1.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
The next, I just wanted to make it known that I am giving Mr. Whiten a copy of the Board Member's Code of Ethics and Conflict of Interest Rules and Regulations. I'd just like you to take them and just sign that you have received them. And I will also give Mr. Whiten instructions regarding the required criminal history background check.
Awesome.
We'll discuss that after the meeting.
Okay. And, John, just so you know, it's a good board meeting to be appointed at. We typically have two board meetings a month, and this is our first one. At our first meeting, it's just a workshop, so we don't do any voting. You can just kind of follow along this evening. Makes it a lot easier.
All right.
Remember, Monique, I think you got appointed at a voting session, and you just get to be like, wait, what do I do? What do I say? What am I supposed to do? All right, so we will move on with the rest of our agenda after we give a hearty congratulations to Mr. Whiten and welcome him to the board. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next time, you'll get one of these. It's a really, it's a really...
That's really fancy.
It's a really exciting moment in a board member's career, really. Okay. So, we will move on to our student representative's reports. Hello, students. We didn't get to see you last time. I hope your midterms or finals or what were you taking?
Oh, we're taking midterms.
You're taking midterms. I hope they all went well. It is nice to see you again, and thank you for your help in the whole process that we just went through.
No problem. So, the report. Irving participated in the Global Day of Play on February 6th. Students had the chance to play and have fun during the school day. And Bartle had the Winter Chorus Concert last month on the 17th. It was a great success thanks to the support from the staff and talented students. Bartle held a responsive community meeting last Wednesday, and the student council has begun to meet. Their last meeting was on the 29th. Today was the start of a month-long event at Bartle, Peadys for Patents. It's a fundraising for leukemia and lymphoma society, and the day was also the start of Bartle's Spirit Week. And coming up, Bartle has a family Valentine's Dance on the 14th.
The middle school also has a Valentine's Dance on the 14th, and the school is closed on the 18th and is for all Highland Park schools. For the high school, midterm exams started last month on the 28th and went until the 31st. The newly-formed Student Senate had its first meeting on the 8th last month, where club leaders got together to make decisions and plan important school events. The next meeting is planned for next Thursday. Highland Park, the high school also hosted a Coffee with Counselors event where students could meet and drink coffee and get to know their counselors better. There was also the Counselors Appreciation Week, where we thanked the Guidance Department for all they do for us with the limited resources they have. Report cards came out on the 8th. The Model United Nations Club is preparing for their conference in Mexico. Coming up, there's a Black History Celebration in the high school on the 21st and a blood drive on March 1st.
And during the Chinese Lunar New Year celebration, students and members of the community came out to celebrate the Year of the Pig and enjoy a potluck. And there were special performances from many talented student groups in the school and in this entire district. And Student Congress has just finished a fundraiser for Valentine's Day, a carnation sale. We sold more than 250 flowers, with Mr. Laster supporting us by buying 106 for all the professionals at the school.
Oh.
And the NHS Club is having its annual stuffed animal fundraiser for Valentine's Day. Battle of the Books competition is this Wednesday. Deca State Testing will also be on Wednesday and Thursday, and we wish the students the best of luck. And for sports, so on February 6th, boys' basketball won against Perth Amboy Tech, 66 to 63. It was a league game. February 7th, girls' basketball won 32 to 28. And February 7th, boys' basketball won 47 to 38. This Wednesday, there's a girls' basketball home game, and this Friday, there's a boys' basketball away game and a girls' basketball home game. And there's a delayed opening tomorrow, though Dr. Taylor, I seriously wish that you canceled instead. But I'll take what I can get.
Whatever.
Hilarious. All right. Thank you both very much. Anybody have any questions for the students today? All right. Thanks.
Thank you.
We already moved Dr. Taylor's report up to the front, so we're done there. I skipped over communications, but there wasn't anything on the agenda. Do we have anything additional?
I did want to remind all of the board members, including our newest one, about the requirement for you to complete the online Ethics and Financial Disclosure Report. You should all have received an email with a link to the website. If you have not, if you lost it, or if you don't recall getting it, just contact Janet Becker in my office, and she will have the DOE send you another email with another link. That is due in about a month, so please don't delay. Okay? I don't want to have to come to your house.
If you just search Ethics, if you go into your board email and just search Ethics Commission, it will pop up. Yeah. And it'll be there. Yeah, that was definitely one of those emails I got, and I'm like, yep, I'll get right to that, and then...
I have a special folder. It's called Important Emails, so I move all those things over because I get so many.
See? There you go. I'm gonna take that. And then that'll be another folder I won't get to look in. But thank you very much for that reminder. Okay. So, we are going to move on to our committee reports. Michelle, if you could give us the Curriculum and Instruction Report, which is remarkably short this...
I know, and you're welcome. We did not meet this time. We did not have a committee meeting this time. There just wasn't much to get together to discuss, but number two is the resolution to approve the field trip requests, and I hope everyone took a look at the list. Number three is the resolution to approve the HIB incident report for the month of December 2018, and that is letters A through D. And that concludes my report.
Good grief.
How is that even possible?
I don't know.
Okay. Anyone have any questions for Michelle, possibly? I don't know how you could, but maybe you do.
My favorite color's green.
All right. So, we will move on to Finance and Facilities with Mark.
Yes, thank you, Darcy. So, the Finance Committee met this evening at 6 o'clock before our board meeting and private session. We discussed the current agenda. We also discussed some other items, the first of which is we went over our agenda for the budget sessions. So, we had our first budget meeting on February 4th, where we went over the budgets from Irving and high school. Future meetings are scheduled for February 20th and March 4th. The state aid figures will be released two days after the Governor's Budget Address, which is going to be held on March 5th, so the state aid will be released on March 7th. I would, there's three members of the committee, that's myself and Robyn Darcy, so if we, if anyone is interested, it's, as I say every year, it's interesting. You'll learn a lot about the individual schools and the individual departments. So, anybody who would like to come, just send an email. We can't have more than four, of course. So, if one person is interested who's not on the committee, that would be wonderful.
Plus, I'm going to just throw out there that I'm not going to be at the March 4th meeting, so we definitely need somebody to kind of sit in there. We don't need them. Sure that it will go just fine, but, you know, it'd be nice to have somebody sit in and have another voice and another set of ears.
And I just want to say that it's been very, as in prior years, but even more so this year, very well organized by Scott and Linda. So, we come in there really moving and moving along and going through it relatively quickly. But you guess, you'll get a good picture on what's happening, where the money is going, et cetera. It's very, very good. We discussed briefly the use of some of our capital reserve funds for some capital projects. For instance, the high school roof needs some work. We're looking at potentially doing some work on the track and the artificial turf field at the high school. Some of that might come out of our capital reserve, so we discussed that briefly. Linda reminded us that the auditor will hopefully be coming to our next board meeting, so giving us an audit report on the Board's books. And if that happens, the Finance Committee, I hope, would be meeting a half hour early and just talking to them for a few moments before the board meeting. But that should happen, hopefully, the 25th at our next meeting. We briefly discussed the enrollment report. Enrollment is up slightly in the, on the January 28th meeting, and then between that and now, it's up. It's up to 1,658 students, which is slightly high for this time of year. When I saw that earlier in the day when Linda sent us the notes, I looked at the report we had two years ago from the Demographer plus some work I did following that. It's still quite a lot lower than that demographic report. It's, I think the Demographer had estimated 1,750 to 1,775 students. So, we're within a good band. It's not getting too low, and it's, we're not getting too many students to overburden the system. And that is what we did at our meeting. And then for the, for our list, item, items 2, 3, and 4, items 2, 3, and 4 are the bill lists, the travel and expense-related lists, and resolution, number 4 is a resolution approving contractors for professional services as usual. Item 5 is a resolution to approve three new out-of-district placements. So, these are three students, I believe, all of whom, yes, three students. The first student and the third are out of district, have moved into district from other communities. The second student is currently a student at Irving and needs a more supportive out-of-district placement, so it's three new out-of-district placements. And as I guess I always say, it's very, very expensive. It's a big cost item for us. Item, item 6 is a resolution to approve a settlement agreement for a student who's also out of district but is moving to a new school. It's also quite a lot more expensive. It's good that we can do this, that we're able to afford it. It would be better if the state helped us more as they did in past times, because we're taking the full burden, the taxpayer is, of very, very expensive out-of-district school placements. And if you look at what the state is contributing, it's very, very small, unfortunately. And then the last item on the list is a resolution to utilize the competitive contract procurement process to obtain our food service management proposals. So, there will be a one-year contract with four additional one-year renewals possible. So, that's the report.
Right. And this is, what I understand, Mark and Linda, right? This is just merely perfunctory. We have to do this every so many years.
It is. Yes.
This is our time. We have to do it.
Okay. All right. So, anybody have any questions for Mark on any of the finance items?
It's just general, but some of my friends are trying to watch the live stream, and they say there's no audio on the stream. Is that...
John had turned it off during the, during the interviews, and then did you also do a delay, John? So, are folks still seeing it on a delay?
He was concerned about not being able to do that.
Right. Okay.
Do you know where the, where your friends are and watching?
They're watching it on the YouTube livestream link.
It is live, then?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But John had turned the sound off for the interviews.
Okay.
Oh, that's what they do.
So, just so somebody else couldn't be in the, you know, John, making sure John wasn't back there listening in.
Yes, I did my whole setup.
Okay. So, if no one has any questions for...
I actually have a question about number four with the psychiatrist and like the neurodevelopmental evaluation. Would they be called in on a case-by-case basis, like for students who need them, or is it just like a permanent, like, they're just here and you can talk to them if you need to?
No, it's just as needed.
Okay.
Personnel. Anne, hi. Sorry. I had a little bit of a cognitive delay there.
I've been having it also.
I know. Oh, yeah. I'm going to whip this personnel committee into shape. Just kidding. We really missed Judy. We did not have a meeting this month, but we did speak afterwards. It turned out that committee members had questions, so we resolved not to cancel any more meetings. That was our mistake. So, we did not have a meeting on February 5th as we normally did. We will have one, I believe, in early March. Mostly self-explanatory stuff here. We have some new para-hires, welcome, and some athletic changes of personnel. We have a new head boys' track coach, James Tweed. What else do we have? We have, my computer's being crazy all of a sudden. We have Millie Chambers will be doing the Spring Musical, she'll be the Spring Musical Orchestra pit director. Michael Moore will be the new, will now be the head baseball coach. And what else do we have? And we have Mr. Marx as the assistant high school girl spring track coach. Let's see. Number 16, Dynamic Learning Maps. I believe that's a testing format or a type of test for students with cognitive disabilities, so that's professional training on that. I'm sure someone will correct me if I'm wrong about what that is. Let's see. Everything else, pretty self-explanatory. Home instruction materials, somebody moved up on the guide. I see we're getting to work writing the Title III Immigrant Welcome Handbook. That's good to see.
Yay.
And we did, a couple of committee members did have questions about some of the new hires. Scott was going to get us some information about that, so if anybody has questions, feel free to reach out to me or Scott, but if you reach out to me, Scott will only have to answer one set of questions. Okay. That's all I got. Okay. Any questions for Anne?
I just had a question because last meeting, we had the pretty good turnout of girls' track, the track team and parents. So, I kind of remember that there were to be two girls' track coach opening. Is that, Scott, am I right about there were two, or, because I only see Mr. Marx here?
We, we have, at the time, we only had the head coach position for baseball and for track, but none, but that was it at that point. The only other recommendation I need to make at this point will be for an assistant track coach, being that we now have a resignation. But that's all that we had at that point last week, at the last meeting.
But we don't have a replacement yet for the assistant boys' track coach, correct?
Um...
That's not been decided yet?
So...
Number 12.
So, we're recommending that the head coach position for track be filled by Jim Tweed, but since he was the assistant coach for track?
Right.
We now have that vacancy that we have to fill going into the next meeting.
I see. Okay.
Does that make sense, Rob?
One's boys and one's girls. I think that's what the confusion is.
Oh, wait.
That's the confusion.
I don't recall it being a vacancy in the girl side.
Yeah, isn't number nine girls?
But I'll check on that.
So, it was just the assistant coach that they were coming to...
Is there one assistant girl?
No, 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 no. It was the head girls. The head coach position for the boys' track team.
No, with the girls.
I'm sorry, for the spring track team. But that has been, that position's being filled. I believe they were out, I mean, unless I heard them wrong, they were coming out to recommend somebody for the track team head coach position.
For the girls.
For the girls.
The focus was definitely on the girls.
The girls, I think it was for the girls' assistant track coach.
Yes, I apologize there. I did not notice that. I mean, Mr. Tweed, what job is he taking on now? The high school, it says high school boys. I know, but it wasn't the girls?
It does. Let me, I want to get clarification from Craig Urban now on that, and I'll follow up with you. Give me five minutes or so?
Okay.
Sure.
And then, Rob, I'll follow up with you.
I'm sorry. I did not notice that. I think you are correct in your comment.
It might be, well, let me follow up with him.
No, I'm not sure about that.
Let me check with the AD first, then I'll get back to you, Rob.
I'm not sure that it's a mistake, because I see Derek Nobles was the, has resigned as the boys' track, head track coach, right?
And we wrote down here that Mr...
Replacing him.
That Mr. Tweed is replacing him.
Correct.
But I had thought, I thought I had heard from some other source that Mr. Tweed was going to be taking on the more controversial role.
I see.
Was, but I'm not obviously sure about that.
Okay. Thanks, Scott. That's great.
We will clarify that. Scott will clarify that shortly. Okay. Any other questions on the personnel?
Well, I guess, the other part of that was, I just want to, could we confirm, because these were internal candidates, there was no opportunity whatsoever to even consider an outside candidate?
That's correct. The contract, the HPA contract spells out the process clearly, and as I pointed out in public session last week, PERC decision also dictates that we have to go with internal candidates, that they're qualified first. And I'll just reiterate what I said last meeting. By qualified, we're not talking about bare minimum qualifications. We're talking about qualified to do the job well.
And Scott and I did have a phone conversation and confirm and looked through the contract and all the language is very clearly spelled out in the contract, and that is also backed up by PERC, so, which is the Public Employment Relations Commission. So, if so, there had been no qualified candidate, then we could've gone outside, but with there being qualified candidates internally. Okay. So, if there aren't any additional questions on personnel, Scott's gonna circle back to us on that one question. We'll move on to policies, again with Mark.
Thank you, Darcy. So, the committee, excuse me, the policy committee met on February 25th in the evening. We discussed three policies. The first one was a, oh, I'm sorry, January, January, January 25th. We discussed the revision, really a complete rewrite, to our suicide prevention policy. Darcy had reached out to Amy Seville, who's involved professionally and I think has access to model policies at the national level, and provided us with a model policy to, to review, to use as a replacement for what we have, although the policy has to have the appropriate New Jersey terminology and statutes applied. The wording in that policy was, we all thought far superior to what we had up until now. So, we reviewed the policy. It is on the agenda for this month for first reading. Scott is, has a copy to review with his administration. Darcy has sent a copy to Amy to review, and we have her feedback on it, which the committee will review over the next two weeks. She made a number of good suggestions. We believe this is a much better policy, again, than we have now, and we should move forward on it. It's much, much more comprehensive, and this is something we wanna take great care on. It's a very serious matter for us. The second policy we discussed was student lateness. This comes out of the change in the attendance policy, given that there is a, an internal administrative policy, it's not a board policy, to count three latenesses as an absence at the high school. And we, we wanna review the, the student lateness policy with regard to that and with regard to what steps the high school could take to change that policy while continuing to be very serious about student lateness. So, I, I believe at this point that this is not on our agenda, or it's not in for first reading. We didn't come to words on this, but Scott was going to review this with Mike Lassiter and come up with some ideas to modify the current policy with regard to some of the issues and problems around counting three latenesses as an absence, for a number of reasons. I mean, for, for one thing, our reports to the state look very skewed. We look like no one comes to school here if we have enough, you know, in the high school, if we have enough lateness. So, we need to do something. So, we're, we're, we'll wait, you know, until our next meeting, which is March, I've forgotten the date, but early in March. And we'll review that, and it's March 4th or 5th. We'll review that and, with Scott and Mr. Lassiter and hopefully come up with some changes there. And then, we reviewed the policy briefly on student restraint. It's a mandatory policy as presented by our consultant Strauss Esme. We need to, we need to do something about this. We, I mean, we need to have a policy. It's a policy 5561. We don't have one. There's questions about whether it's only for disabled students or for the whole student body. Apparently, a lot of work went on, on the board policy committee before my time on the board. I know Ruth, Ruth and Anne have talked to us about work that was gone into that policy. It's also a very important policy. Before a student gets restrained or secluded, this is, it's a very serious matter. So, we'll be reviewing this based on the model Strauss Esme policy, a policy developed in 2015 by the board, and a slightly older Strauss Esme policy, which we marked up. So, we have three policies to review, but we will get one of them and do something with those. So, those are on our agenda, and a few others. So, with that all said, we have one policy for first reading, and that, that will be later this month for student suicide prevention. And I will be marking that up over, and sharing it with the committee and then the rest of the board over the next week. With the weather tomorrow, I may spend my morning, instead of being out in the snow, doing some work on that, based on Amy Seville's suggestions, excellent suggestions, I should say. And then, we will have policies for second reading, health and physical education, attendance, and the student integrated pest management plan. So, those three will be voted on for, to put them, make them current policies at the end of the month. So, that's the report.
All right. Quick question.
Yes.
There were some corrections to the, which one was it? I think it was the health and physical education policy that I needed to get to you, and of course I didn't. What's the best way to get, I mean, and they're just, you know, typographical, they're not?
If you, if you modify it and then just, when you edit it, just share it back with an email, you know, so it automatically gets?
But I don't get, we don't get editable, we just get PDFs in the drive, so.
Oh, just email me a copy with the changes and I'll go look at it and share, and we could share it among us. If it's simple edits, I mean, I could, I can.
So, you're, you're actually physically putting, I didn't know if Susan was doing that, if you're doing that?
These I'm actually putting in if I have edit access to them.
Okay. All right. So, maybe afterwards, we could just sit for a minute and I'll show you the?
Okay, that's fair.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. I wonder if it would make sense to talk to Scott or Susan about whether, if you could have Google Drive, Google documents that are editable on the drive for board members to make comments on?
They should be there. I thought these were.
Some of them on the drive are, some of them are, some of the PDFs are, some of them are just in PDF.
PDFs, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but we can't. We can't, as a whole board, we can't be editing a document. Right. You're right. Okay. I'll take it back. Open Public Meetings Act. We can't do that.
I did have a quick question.
Yes.
If I could.
Yeah.
So, on the late and, and absent issue?
Yes.
What do, do we know what other schools typically do with that?
That's, that's, yeah, that's.
We have our policy and, but, you know, we, again, you're right. We don't want to unfairly penalize, you know, the kids for excessive latenesses. Well, we wanna penalize them, but not too much, right?
What the committee?
Not with an absence.
What the committee came, we, Scott, that's a, really a question for you, I think, which is, when you talk to your other superintendents group?
What do they do?
What do the other districts do? What the committee felt was, I think unanimously, that if a student, and I think we're doing this, if a student is late a lot, you know, three absences, then three more, then three more, you know, that, that's probably a student that needs to talk to somebody and, and, and get some support, teen center or, or guidance or some other support. I think that the, the administration, the high school administration feels that the policy of three latenesses equals one absence is a deterrent, and the, I think the committee did not feel that.
Yeah.
The committee definitely didn't feel that. But we need to have some way of doing this that's some deterrent, but also some help.
Right.
And, and I would ask, I would ask our students, what do, what does a student, what does the student body feel? I mean, you guys, as representatives of the student body, I think we've heard in past years about this. Is this a deterrent?
Well, I would like to say, I, I don't think it is very much of a deterrent. However, in my experience in other school districts, I transferred here my sophomore year.
Oh, you did? Okay.
The attendance policy was not as strict. I was a bit surprised about the level of, especially concerning the amount of lates?
Yes.
You could have. For example, health is a quarter, quarterly class, so just one quarter. So, you really can only be late one or two times in not to be able to keep from losing credit from that class. And that's especially concerning for like seniors, where, you know, you don't wanna be graduating with a huge credit recovery issue. So, yeah, I think that's definitely logistically a bit difficult for students, and especially if it's a case where, when you think of losing credit, that means that you have not been in class enough to really learn the content and thus be able to accurately, you know, have a sense of knowledge. But if you're late, we're talking like one or two minutes even.
Right.
That, I don't think that really accurately reflects not being able to know the content.
One of our student representatives last year bitterly talked about being 10 seconds late, having to wait online, ending up being a minute or two late, and then, if that happens a few times, you start worrying about losing credit or losing credit. And it, I think when the committee met about this, which came out of us discussing the attendance policy, we were very concerned that it was putting undue stress for no, you know, no, not a very strong reason on, on students, but on the other hand, you need some way of trying to have, and, and, and there is the issue that we, we have a later, a later start time. And so, one would hope that with a later start time, that would have a positive effect.
It's not just the first period, though. It's other, it's.
Yes, it's any period. It's any period.
But when you talk about, though, other school districts that are less strict than ours, that's what I'm interested in.
Yes.
I would like us to be kind of on par with the other school districts and not really tougher or easier.
I mean, none of the policies are gonna be fit, like, are not gonna fit for everyone. Everyone's gonna have some small slip-ups, but I believe that, like, the current policy is fine. Everyone has like this safety net, like a few lates, a few absences, like to go on. And like, there's always gonna be students who like don't wanna show up to class and will be late, no matter what you do. So, this policy right now, I think, is pretty fair in general. It's like, it gives students the, like, option of being like maybe late once or twice, but then like if they realize that it's a problem, then they should be starting to correct it instead of just saying like, I'm just gonna keep being chronically late to this one class and then lose credits in it.
One would hope.
So, it could be, yeah, it could be fine for the students. And as for the like late one minute or two minute thing, sometimes it doesn't affect anything, but if the teachers, like, one of those teachers who like really starts early, and then they're in the middle of like talking, and then a student just comes in, the door is always loud, and then everyone turns to look at them, it's just, it's really distracting, at least for students, the learning in like the classroom to like have that happen to them. So, as like this policy right now, although it might not deter everyone and it might not be as effective as like desired, it's still good for the students to like, you know, give them like a safety net while still being like strict enough to like.
Can I, yeah, I'm sorry, can I just ask a question? Well, two questions, actually. Have we collected any data since we implemented these new, sort of the later start of the school day and the, this new policy of three?
I think that's an old policy.
It's an old policy. That's an old policy. That's why we're talking about it.
But I did, I did, I have data, I could pull it up, but I looked at it last year with Mr. Lassiter and Ms. Brady when she was the assistant principal of both schools at the time, that shows a history of our chronic absenteeism rates. The claim that Mr. Lassiter was making is that when we had more rules in place and more hands on deck, we had, at the time, we had deans of students at the high school, teachers who got paid stipend to monitor kids. Our chronic absenteeism rates were at as high as they are now. So, I don't know, but there's definitely been a worsening of the problem.
But I think their question or concern is also about, I would hope that one or two minutes is really not a deal breaker or counting someone is actually late. I mean, we're thinking about preparing our students for the real world, and in the real world, we have some flexibility with arriving to a class within like a five-minute window, or to work for that matter, or to a board meeting. So, I mean, I would hope that we can prepare our students to be, to understand that as adults, we have some sense of respect and flexibility as well, right? So, you have a little bit of, and a minute or two really is not a deal breaker. And also, the clock could be a minute or two difference between what's on the classroom clock and my watch.
The thing is, if, let's say there's a three-minute grace period, but then there's the next one minute or the next two minutes after that, it does, it definitely.
Well, that's different, yeah, that's different, because then you're talking about, well, you're getting closer to five or 10 minutes.
Right.
I'm saying if you're one or two minutes after the start of a class, we should not be issuing, you know, a lateness that's gonna count towards.
Well, a loss of credit.
A loss of credit for one or two minutes.
I mean, I can, I can get behind, you know, taking action with regard to that student, you know, talking to the student, supporting the student. If he's one minute late every single day, that's disrespectful, that's difficult for other students, but, but yeah, to lose credit because you missed a bunch of one minutes, that seems kinda crazy.
Teachers right now are actually like respecting the students, like, being one minute or like two minutes late from the start of school and then also like in classes, they don't take attendance like immediately. And if they're like in, basically on time, then they'll still put them as like present and without a tardy. So, that's like, we already do have a grace period, it's just not like in the books, so.
Okay. Well, I would argue that's, that's not, in terms of classes that come after the start of school, like you, you know, after lunch or something, yes, typically, teachers aren't going to get mad at you, but in terms of if you're late to school itself, there is no grace period. I would suggest something, if we could set up a type of equation or something where like, you know, if you're five minutes late, you lose, you know, it's only a percentage of a way to an entire late, but, you know, the later you are, like, if it gets to like half an hour, it makes up a larger percentage. That way, we're not weighing someone that came in five minutes late with someone who came in two hours late as the same deal. So, you know, I think there should still be some punishment to coming in five minutes late, because, you know, we, we want people to be on time, but it should not be treated the same as somebody else.
Thank you.
I also think it's an important point that you brought up about certain classes being quarterly. You know, missing one day of health could put you into some sort of danger zone where you're missing credit, you know? So, it is kind of a weighted punishment that we're using if we're not paying attention to the details. But one of the other parts of this that I thought was important was to, you know, find out more about what's motivating the students. You know, we don't want kids to only get the message that obedience is, you know, first and foremost, the reason why you should come to school. The reason why you should come to school is because you want to be here, you want to contribute. There should be something motivating you besides just being afraid to get in trouble. And I think that sometimes we forget that this is supposed to be an institution of education, of learning, not teaching, you know, crime and punishment, kind of obedience-only type of thing. So, you know, it's important for us to think about why, why we're making decisions about lateness in the way that we're making them. Like, are we really teaching anything? There were, you know, two classes that my son got credit taken, or potentially could've got credit taken away from last year, although he earned A pluses in both those classes. But because of attendance, his credit was taken away. So, you know, towards the end of the year, he was like, why bother? Why am I gonna show up at all? And so, the motivation for him to come do the work, that he was doing exemplary work, it just, he just lost motivation, and it, it just felt like a game he couldn't win, you know? It was just set up for him to fail. So, that's what I worry about in terms of, you know, messages that we send that could be having detrimental effects on the student body.
Scott, Scott, do you, do you have a, will you have some suggestions after talking to Mike?
Absolutely. I haven't had a chance to sit down with Mr. Lassiter yet.
But before the, I'm not looking for them now, but before the policy committee.
Try it on March 5th, I think.
Yeah, yeah, March 5th.
Correct.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you.
I really look forward to seeing what kind of solutions folks come up with, because, I mean, this kind of reminds me of the conversation that we've been having around discipline and zero tolerance policies and not treating everything exactly the same. And actually, at the state level, this is an issue that some legislators are trying to tackle, too, in terms of chronic absenteeism, and there was just a joint committee on the public schools hearing on this issue where they actually invited students in to talk about why they're chronically absent. Like, what issues are you dealing with? What is preventing you from getting to school? And those are some of the conversations I would hope that we'd be having with students who are dealing with chronic absenteeism, because very often, we might be really surprised by what is keeping them from getting them to school. And there may be ways that we can help them get to school, or problems they're having outside of school that we can help them solve. You know, that it's not just this, you know, we can't always look at it as like defiance can't always look at it as, like, defiance or laziness. It can be several other factors that are keeping kids from getting to where they need to be, just like us as adults, you know? I'm not always late to a committee meeting because I'm lazy and I don't want to be there, you know? Actually, that's never why it is. It's usually, you know, my kid did this, or whatever, you know? Like, we've all got, we all have things in our lives. And, you know, it should be us trying to help kids get to a place where they can do the things they need to do, rather than just blindly punishing them and thinking that that's, you know, taking credit away is going to be the thing that makes them get to school on time. I don't know that that works terribly well.
Just to provide a bit more information about, like, so if the conditions outside are, like, really icy, or like, there's huge snow, or something like that, Mr. Lassiter will always do an announcement to say, like, give students, like, a 10-minute grace period just beyond.
I'm not talking about icy. I'm talking about students who are homeless, students who are having issues in their homes. I mean, there are lots of conditions going on in kids' lives that they've got to walk another kid to, they've got to walk their younger sibling to a different school before they come. There's all kinds of things that other kids have going on in their lives that can make it difficult for them to get to school on time. So those are the conversations that I would hope that our, you know, vice principals or deans of students or whoever would be having with students that were flagging as kids who are chronically tardy or absent.
Actually, so I should tell you that since Ms. Golden Cooper's arrival to the high school, we have had enough people now to start up a committee that, on a monthly basis, reviews students' records, those who are chronically absent or late.
Perfect.
So we're seeing things with what gray shades, that we are just black and white, which was the past case. We would just fire off a letter, and in the old days, it was a very.
A letter, no less, that said that we would report you.
Demonstrative letter.
State.
Now we're.
So we've come a long way, baby. Yes.
I, I'm not going to divulge personal information, but I can tell you firsthand as a parent, I am learning how that process is working, and I'm very appreciative of it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, and I would hope that we would work those kinds of things into the policy, you know? So these are the steps that we are expecting staff to take if we have students who are chronically late or chronically absent.
To look at kids as individuals and absolutely.
Absolutely. And it's not just this. We don't just paint things with this broad brush.
I don't know if it's appropriate, but I would love for, you know, our student reps to survey in some way, you know, some of the issues that students might want to share.
I think that might be kind of sensitive. I think it might be better for, I don't know.
That's why I said that students might want to share. I don't think that they should be forced. But, yeah, I mean, they might have different ways of looking at it, different suggestions that might work.
Yeah, sure. We can put up a broad survey, maybe online, and just, like, so at the next student leader meeting, we can do something like that. Yeah, we could bring it out, and then just ask them to, ask their friends if they're, like, constantly late, if they want to, like, fill out a reason why, or something like that.
Or not, not just the students that are chronically late. I'm saying just generally, if there's some issue that they have with, you know, the idea of what we have going in, in the policy currently, that they might want to change. I'm just curious to know if anyone's willing to share any thoughts. That's all.
Cool.
All right. Just really quickly, just looking at the policy that we have to vote on, 5200, and going back to the high school student handbook. And in the student handbook, it says that in 5200, we define three tardies as an absence. But then when you look at our policy, it's got nothing to do with three tardies equals this.
I was just going to say the same thing, to reiterate, this is not in the board policy. The three tardies as an absence is not there. It surprised me as well.
Well, this kind of goes back to, like, the difference between a policy, what, the board's had this policy and then how it's implemented.
How it's implemented.
In the school, right? You know, so you have the difference between a statute and a regulation, you know? Like, we, we do one part, the schools do the other part, you know? But we would hope that what the schools are doing reflects the intention of what our policies say, so.
And we can change the policy to have words that make it clear that that's not what this Board of Education deems appropriate.
Right. We've given a little more latitude in terms of how they write the policy of the, of the handbook.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, surprised me as well, Rob.
Okay. Yeah, and it would be interesting to, like, when did that start? How did that, like, where did that come from? So, but, all right. If no one else has any questions on policy, then we will move.
I do have one question. I'm not sure if this specific reading would be the right area to address concerns within the policy.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So I was looking at the, the policy on health and physical education, 2422, and are a bit concerned about clause 13, where it states that we will stress abstinence in our.
We talked about this last week.
When this came, when this came to the committee, I, all three of us, when we were there, we all said, "Wait a minute, clause 13, there's something wrong." So that's, that's changed in the, in the policy we're going to vote on. And, and a little, as much as we can legally, the state has some regulations we have to follow, but we, I don't know if you have a copy of the policy that we're proposing, the, the updated policy, the policy that we're going to vote on has, let me try to find the words. I might, I might take a minute, though, so.
I mean, this is a crazy state. Is it a statute or a regulation?
It's, I think it's, yes, statute.
Called stress abstinence? Yeah, so that's why it's in the policy. We tried to moderate a little. So that is still in there. Stress abstinence.
Yes, it has to be there.
Also known as the AIDS Prevention Act of 1999 requires sex education programs to stress abstinence.
Oh, yeah.
Any sex education that is given is part of any planned course curriculum or other instructional program.
So what it doesn't say.
And then we add, shall stress that abstinence from sexual activity is the only completely reliable means of eliminating sexual transmission of HIV/AIDS and other sexually transmitted diseases and of avoiding pregnancy. So we can't.
That has to be in there, but it does not mandate that we can't add anything.
Right. So then we added, sex education programs offered in this district shall also offer students information about other methods of preventing pregnancy and disease, along with, as required by state law, the failure rates of those methods. Our programs shall acknowledge and educate students about the diversity of human sexuality, orientations, and gender presentations.
That's, that's what we added, but we looked up the first part, and we can't, we cannot change that by state law.
Yeah.
Every state is different.
I wanted to express a more broader concern that I've heard from a few survey responses, but also just from being a student and overhearing student conversations. There's a bit of a concern about our sexual education in the high school. We do have a freshman program called Teen Pep, but in terms of all of the other grades, we receive a very generic health education every year. Personally, I've gone through three years of this. It's a quarter-long class, and it usually doesn't get very in-depth in terms of sex ed. It's taught by our physical education teachers. And there has been concern that it hasn't addressed issues such as queer sex, sexual education, STDs, forms of contraceptives, which I understand the freshmen do have that, but for someone like me who transferred and has not done the Teen Pep program, or presumably other students have transferred at that same time or afterwards, they would not be receiving this education.
This is the first year we implemented our new middle and high school health curriculum. And I told the curriculum committee that I'll be auditing all the lesson plans at the end of this year to check that the curriculum's actually being implemented. So I'm expecting that the curriculum, which was, I think, is been, is more comprehensive than what maybe you experienced last year, is being effectively implemented. And if it's not, I need to follow up and then make sure that teachers are actually implementing the curriculum that they wrote.
Could we, like, you know, as per Avery's experience as a senior, could we possibly do that audit for this, could you, I'm sorry, do that audit for the senior classes sooner than the others? I know that you had suggested that we wait until the end of the year to see how the program is, you know, kind of being laid out. But because of the history of that, you know, tumultuous history of the sex ed program in Highland Park, especially the past couple of years, that we might be sending our kids out undereducated on the topic.
Totally true.
Yeah. And, and I do think that, you know, as the mother of a queer student, that it might help with some of the bias and misunderstanding about, you know, what, what it means to be a kid like my daughter.
What I will do is, I'll get into this further. I don't know if I would necessarily audit. That takes time. I think the best way for me to handle this is to sit down with Mr. Lassiter, Ms. Golden Cooper, and maybe our humanities supervisor, Ms. Fittipaldi, and make sure that before the seniors leave, we are doing what we should have done. We did this similar, we did this with the fifth grade students, you might recall, about two years ago, when we finally, you know, doubled down on our efforts to increase our work in this area, Mr. Roy pushed in and made sure the fifth graders got what they needed. So what I'll do is I'll get.
And boy, they got it. I had fifth graders in that grade, and they were like, "Wow, all right, here we go. Good. It's on now."
Like, it was like Warp 9 with Mr. Roy, because it was like, it wasn't a rush job, but we definitely made sure we got it in.
They were like, literally, I drove by a group of fifth graders standing on a street corner with what they had gotten, like, "Teach us." It was hilarious.
So I will follow, I will put on our curriculum committee agenda, next agenda, this topic, so that then Avery, Michelle can follow up with the whole board, and you, about the outcome of my work.
Yeah. I was just wondering, what are the current requirements for our sex ed curriculum? Like, I know, I mean, we have this policy, but in addition to this, what are the?
Well, there are state graduation requirements. I don't, I'll find out now and get back to you before we leave. I think it's two years of health.
We, yeah, the state mandates. But could we possibly share that with Avery, the?
Yeah, that'd be great.
You know, the curriculum that we revised.
I'll do that tonight, too. So let me do this all right now before I forget.
Thank you.
Just, I know that Avery wasn't able to experience this, but I took freshman health also, and that was, like, where we mostly talked about, like, STDs, sexual health and all that. We talked about, like, we got, like, diagrams about many different types of contraceptives, condoms, IUDs, different, and, like, I forgot what it's called, but, like, you put it in your arm to prevent pregnancies, different things like that. And so, like, I think that it is, like, a good program so far. Like, we do learn a lot about sex ed. The only thing is that, like, maybe the timing might be off, but it's also hard because you want to get it, like, out there as quickly as possible. So it might not be good to, like, do it as seniors, but as, better as freshmen. But, like, maybe for transfer students, there might be a different program that they could talk, do talk about to, about sex education. And also, just last year, it depends, honestly, on what class you take, I guess, because.
I'm assuming you took regular phys ed last year?
Yeah. So for my class, personal health and fitness, we had presenters come in talking about sexual health. We looked at pictures of people's genital areas affected with, like, the types of STDs and all that stuff. We learned about how to, like, safe sex and everything like that. So I guess it might be a difference in, like, what type of class people are taking that might, like, affect this.
And, and the other, other thing is that the Teen Pep program is very new. It was a number of.
New again.
What's that?
New again.
New again. It was a number of years we didn't have it. It got lost after people really, everyone really liked it, but it got missing and then came back. And that, it means that not only Avery you, but lots of students who are 10th, 11th, 12th graders just missed out on it completely.
And we did, unfortunately, have to graduate them without.
Yeah, without it.
Every time this topic comes up, though, I have to say, I'm always remarkably impressed by the comfort level of our students talking about this topic. I think if I had been a 17- or 18-year-old, I would have been under the table if a group of adults was trying to talk to me about sex education. Like, what is wrong with you people? We're, not only are you adults, we're in public and on camera, but everybody, I mean, like, I'll never forget Lillian just like.
Did you just say condom?
No, but, I mean, I think, I mean, while I think, I think we can always be doing better, I think that's just remarkable, like, absolutely remarkable that you guys have that comfort level. So we're, we may not be getting everything right, but we're getting some stuff right, for sure.
Cloud room.
Yeah. So kudos to you guys. Okay, so now, if no one has any else, anything else on policy, we'll move on to equity and excellence with Monique.
Okay. We have not met since our last meeting. We'll be meeting the last week in February.
Okay, great. So that, will that be before our next meeting or after? Our next meeting is what, on the 25th?
We are meeting the 28th.
Okay. All right. So you'll have more for us in March?
I did have a question, actually.
Yeah.
I think there might be some overlap between curriculum and equity and excellence. So first, I would like to.
Michelle, make sure I think you're probably not close enough to your mic for everybody to hear you.
Hello? Okay. So I just, I wanted to see if I could maybe, you know, throw something on your agenda.
Okay, okay.
But I'll email you about that.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Okay. Scott has something to go back to for the personnel question about the track coach.
So it was clarified to me that the girls, the head girls' track coach is still Mr. Roy. He was approved last year to, you know, continue in that role. We are filling the head boys' coach position, and it is the impression, Mr. Lassiter's part, who texted me, that the head coaches for both girls and boys really work together and apply a lot of their work to the entire team regardless of gender. So it's, it's my assumption that those folks who came out at the last board meeting were here to support somebody who could help them, just as much as he'd be able to help the other boys.
Okay. Makes sense.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, great. All right. So if we have nothing else on our reports, now it's time for a public comment. If anyone would like to make public comment. Now's the time. Nope. Okay. We have no public comment this evening. I don't have anything this evening for the president's report, other than I'm going to welcome John again, just because I can, and let him know that as he gets comfortable and settling in, whatever questions, concerns, thoughts, whatever, feel free to run them by me. I'm sure Linda's office will be in touch with you many times over the next couple of weeks to help you out with emails, and John will get you a computer, and there'll be all kinds of stuff coming at you within the next couple of weeks. But any of us, actually, are at your disposal, and you and I'll have a conversation at some point soon to talk about committee assignments and liaison positions and all that kind of good stuff, so.
And I would like to conduct a, an orientation, like I believe we've done for all the new board members. So at some point, I'll be chatting to you, John. Linda and I will get together with you on that.
Okay.
That's great.
Teach you a secret handshake. That's a secret.
All right. Anybody have anything for old business?
Yeah. I was wondering if we could talk about the Wi-Fi situation and how that would be maybe.
Wi-Fi situation?
Yeah, how, like, the proposed solutions might be, like, I have some suggestions for it and all that, if we'd be able to talk about it right now.
So first of all, the cafeteria Wi-Fi is one point that you had concern about, right?
Oh, yeah.
That's been vastly improved. Are we keeping that device? That's the idea. But we had something like 200, was it about 200, teachers connected to the device, high-speed access at the same time for our professional development day. So we think we've resolved that issue for now. Even Ms. Claremont is affirming. In fact, the Wi-Fi was good. That's the cafeteria. Still working our way through the hallways. And I know we've been discussing plans to...
Hallways? Do you mean in rooms, or do you mean literally the hallways?
The hallways that will, that provide Wi-Fi access to the rooms.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
I'm like, wait, do we have the expectation of Wi-Fi in the hallways now, too?
But as you recall, I gave you a graphic.
Yeah.
And that is, it's our intent to install new infrastructure equipment, like switches and whatnot, over the summer, if we can keep it in our budget going into next year. So there hasn't been any.
Just about that tentative solution, I was like, so I talked it over with some of my friends, and they're, like, way more tech savvy than me. So I'd, like, there were a bit, a few problems that we sort of noticed in it. Would I be able to, like, talk about it now, or do you want just?
I would love to talk to you outside of the board meeting, like I suggested we do last time. All you have to do is reach out to me. I love setting up meetings during lunch. And I'd be glad to sit down. Maybe even Mr. Gartner would be available. The three of us could chat. He's the IT guy. So if you want to do that, let's do it. But just reach out to me.
It would be far more informative than us staring at you blankly. Talking to, talking to Dr. Taylor and John would be a far better route, because.
And Scott?
And I don't have as many answers as he does.
If you do set up any kind of lunch to discuss IT equipment, I'd be happy to join you, given my background. So just invite me, I'd be happy to be there.
Not only is Mark a technologist, but he's also our finance chair, so the two could come together beautifully.
Excellent. All right. Anybody else have anything for old business? New? Anybody have anything for new business? Any pressing public comment come up in the last five minutes? No? Okay. So can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good night, everybody.